Right above the top of the wall, these are existing oak trees and these are new trees, which are being added on the edge of the tennis court. So I thought this was an important drawing to show you how screened this will be from the neighbor's property.
How long will it take to get that level of density?
I believe these are 24-inch box.
Twenty-four inch box.
These are 24-inch box, which should be substantial. I have not seen the specimens. I would think that it will, number one, it will be fairly full by the day it's planted, and probably within a year, a year and a half, it should look, I mean, it should look really well screened.
Can we see this a little closer? Can you hand this up? Because this is, this is the one view that I was hoping to see.
From the wall.
Yeah, because I envisioned it being a big wall.
Yeah, because it's a...
Yeah, yeah, you're going to see it, but yeah. So I was interested to see the limitations.
Could you describe the acoustical wall? Is it going to be concrete with a coating?
It is, it is a, it is a shape. It's like a CNE wall, concrete block wall. They come in a variety of thicknesses, four, six, eight, and we have not selected the exact product yet, but it basically looks a lot like a CNE wall, a concrete masonry wall. It will be, on the neighbor's property, fully screened. They will, they will not see it after.
I'm just wondering about the acoustical qualities, obviously.
The acoustical qualities are specified in the Wilson hearing report. They reduce the decibels by about, I think it was about something like 15 decibels. I think we have that in the, in the report, what the reduction is. A substantial reduction from, you know, what the, the sound of somebody serving, you know, an overhead serve.
Is this absorption, partly absorption by the wall itself?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions for the applicant?
How do you want to deal, there's like four different items here. How do you want to deal with it? Are we going to do one by one or?
We're going to do it one by one. We'll do one by one, but the presentations should be, cover all the situations. I think we heard the full presentation in January and we at that time decided that it was, the disposals or the applications were exempt from CEQA. And so we go on to lead the compromise solution here. It consists, as you say, of four separate items. What I would do is after we've had the public hearing, uh, closed the public hearing, and then ask each, ask the commissioners to deal with it one by one. For instance, with the leaning, I mean, with the tree, the whole tree by the house, that would be the first item to be questioned.
Okay, so you, so you want, if we have any questions about any item, to raise them?
Yeah, but, but I don't want to, I want to make it informal enough so that it's, you know, you could ask again if you want to think this isn't going to shut you off from this. We want to clarify exactly what's happening. Any other questions?
Yeah. In the grading drainage comments, there's a comment made that the runoff will be piped around the property and pumped out the street. It also makes a comment somewhere in there that the retention tanks are going to be 48 inches, or 48 inches in diameter, 120 feet of them. In the, so the question is, in the calculations for the off-ball, it is the cut and fill, that's about 1,000 yards, does that include the, the room to put the retention tanks in?
You know, the civil engineer that proposed that solution is the same civil, the same engineer who did the area calks and the quantity calks. So I can only, since they're not here tonight, I can only say, I assume so. But I don't, I did not do those calks myself, so.
And where, if there's pumping equipment, where is it going to be located and outscreened? The jointing of the land is not happening.
It has not been engineered yet. It's only a, a written description of what the system is. I would assume it will be underneath the court. Uh, under, you know, we have quite a bit of space underneath the court on the downhill side, and it would be the reasonable place to, to create, to create a vault for this.
Okay. The way that reads is about 1,000 yards of off-ball material coming off.
That's right.
And a whole lot of yards coming back in again to make the tennis court, fill and covering the floor in concrete, and a lot of polish on that floor.
Uh, that is, that is...
All right, no further questions, thanks.
Any other questions by the commissioners?
I, I had four questions on the, on the drainage, but I don't want to ask, so I'll hold it for later. I mean, I'm, I just want to make sure that that pump never fails, and so that's it. I made that comment last, last time, because that would not be a good thing.
That is correct, and the proposal, again, is a written proposal, not, you know, fully engineered with pipe sizes and all of that, calls for a backup pump, battery-operated backup pump. All right, that is, that is in the written civil engineer's proposal.
Good, I don't remember that from the last comment. That's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll open the hearing to anybody, a member of the public that would like to speak on this subject. Well, you've certainly gotten...
Got the neighbor's, that's a lot different than the last time.
Yeah. All right, we'll close the, the public hearing then, and as I said before, what we will do is vote on each one of the four issues. We'll start out with the tree, the heritage tree by the house, move then to the carport, then to the leaning tree, which is sound, where the court will be, and finally to the approval for the two walls to be located. So let's start out on the tree by the house. Commissioner, and I'll look to you first, Eric.
This is the, this is the...
You tend to look at it here.
Yeah. Good, good. How else are you playing basketball, Peter? Uh, yeah, that's the one that, it was, when you're talking about is the one that was held, that's held up underneath the thing.
Yeah, that's right, by the house. The big tree.
Yeah, I, I understood the rationale for, for the removal of that, so that made sense to me. I didn't see anything specific there that, that would be an issue for me at this point, unless somebody else came up with something that I didn't see. It did look like an, uh, potential safety issue downstream.
I agree. Talked with the technicals, we were looking at it, it seems like it's a choice, it's not a thing. It's artificial things, and it's probably time to, to replace. It's, it's a pretty prime location, so it's too bad, but it's, because it takes a long time for those trees to grow up, but, you know, it's, there's nothing we can do about that, so it's removal of that tree.
Mary Beth?
I have a question.
Yeah, I agree with the tree, there are no other thoughts. Make a motion?
I move the commission to approve the heritage tree removal permit, that number three. And we will for two, it wasn't one heritage tree anyway.
One, yeah, one heritage tree.
Located near the house at 92 Southern Drive, based on the findings, and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report and subject to the conditions listed on the heritage tree removal permit.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All negative, no? There's no negative votes, so that passes. We'll move on then to the carport. Phil, why don't you start?
I have some, I haven't got any comments particularly about the carport. It's what was well-stated, so we'd see where it is. I would like to add some comments to these, the special structures permit. Under number three, the applicant shall submit a landscape screening plan to the written satisfaction of town arborists. And I'd like to add with special attention to screening of headlights into the neighbor's property. People don't want to put in there. Add some special conditions there. And then I have, I have a number five, Lisa knows what this one's going to be.
How lighting shall I screen? Should I downlight?
Any, any lighting shall be sealed and downlit until the...
If they turn on that market on that condition, it's not special.
Bad nesting theories.
All right, Mary Beth, your comment?
I don't think there's a whole lot else to say.
I actually do have some comments on the, on the carport.
Okay.
Our, you know, our ordinance provides that the, that there has to be a setback for, for structures like that, and traditionally, we've approved just about every flag lot that's come through, partially because of the rationale that you can't see it from the street, because most flag lots, by definition, are set back. This law is actually the opposite. It's, you know, this carport is like on the top of a hill, so it's actually far more noticeable from the street than, than it would be. I mean, if you stand where that thing is state dead, you know, it's, it would be very visible, and the cars there will be very visible, because right, you know, maybe it's, it's dealt with through screening, but, you know, our traditional position of approving it for flag lots because you can't see it from the street is actually, doesn't apply here, so, you know, I, I have some concerns because it's going to be so visible from the street.
I didn't, I didn't have a concern on that level, and I, I thought the mitigation was going to take care of any visibility there was. I actually didn't, I actually couldn't see, I went down below and see what I could see from the bottom, and I, I, I don't know how, you know, how far up that street have you to go to deliberately see it, but I don't think you could see it from any entrance that I came in. So I, I didn't have the same concern. Actually, I thought it would, it'd be a better, better setup than really getting in and out of that driveway, because I deliberately parked down the hill, because I wouldn't want to back into, in and out of that, the area right in front of the garage, so I, I don't have an issue with it, as long, particularly since, you know, the right lighting.
Well, I, I, I'm a little puzzled, but I, I doubt that really from down below, if you're going to be able to see the carport, also through the screening, the hair. It's, it is true that it is a front setback, it doesn't meet our ordinances on that item, but it, on a hillside lot like that, I think we'd have to be more flexible. So I would vote approval of the carport. May we have a motion? Are you ready, Phil?
They're finding again.
I'll, I'll move the planning commission approve the special structure permit at 97 Southern Drive, based on the findings, and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, with the modifications suggested, and subject to the conditions listed in the draft special structures permit to allow carport to be located 87 feet from the front property line of the property.
May we have a second question?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those are with Phil's mind.
You're...
Aye.
All negatives?
Aye.
Okay. The approval is granted, on four to one vote. Next item will be the, what I would call the leaning tree in the tennis court area. You want to strike that one out, Mary Beth?
I don't see that, that tree isn't a problem, removal of that tree is not a problem to me, because of this, because the, the lot is heavily wooded or, you know, treed, and it's, it really, if we don't, we take that tree out, then the tennis court is going to be a big problem. I, I don't want to stand in that way.
Paul?
I think it's really the choice that it's got to go if there's going to be a tennis court. If you don't move the tree, you're not going to take the tennis court out. I mean, it's not the greatest specimen of a tree, but, you know, every tree has its sort of right to live, but I'd still support removal of the tree for the reasons given in the staff report.
Eric?
I was going to say that if other heritage trees knew that this one qualified, they'd be embarrassed for him. This is a, this is not a, it's not a very good tree, and it's split, and it has, has issues that would, would potentially give it a problem later on, so I, I don't have a problem with removal, even if there weren't a court there. So I'm fine with it.
Phil?
This court removal.
I would support the removal. May we have a motion now?
I'll make the same motion. I'm with the planning commission, approve the heritage tree removal permit for removal of one heritage tree located in the proximity of the proposed tennis court at 92 Southern Drive, based on the findings, and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report and subject to the conditions listed in the heritage tree removal permit.
Now, your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? The approval is granted, five to nothing. Now we'll go to the walls of the, by the tennis court, that are closer than 20 feet. Paul, why don't you start this one?
So are we taking the wall separate from the court? It's...
The tennis court is really, it's okay?
It's a special structure permit.
All right.
Based on the tennis.
All right, got it, all right.
First, I got to say, I'm constantly amazed at the lengths people will go through to build a tennis court. I mean, when I went there, I was like, you're building a tennis court there? I mean, that's a 45-degree hill. But, you know, I don't play tennis, but obviously there is quite dedication to the, to the, to the sport, given some of the stuff that comes to us.
I guess no matter how old you are.
Sure, it's a great canyon.
But, you know, I think that here, you know, it's hard to believe that the only thing that is justifying coming to the planning commission of that tennis court is the two retaining walls, which I think is, is really a technicality. I was surprised that you could basically, you know, move 1,500 cubic yards of material, build a nine-foot solid wall on the side of a hill, and, you know, lead to all this potential drainage issue, and none of that is a problem. But basically, building a retaining wall on either side of a staircase ends up, you know, driving the, the, coming before the planning commission. I mean, I see it as a technicality that, you know, I wouldn't want to stand in the way of anything just because of that, that reason for having two retaining walls that close, and, you know, if, if it's been worked out with the neighbor, then, you know, then I would support the, I would support the proposal.
Eric?
Well, my comment when I was turning the side, second item was, I never wanted to play tennis this bad, but, but I, I do, I do believe that the, the right people are, have been involved at the, the discussion of what the, what the best approach is for the, for the use of that, of that area. I'm, I'm confident that the, the architecture and all the groundwork and all the, all the work that needs to be done to make it a safe location for this biggest structure will be there. I, I do want to make sure that we do whatever we can to, to double down on the drainage issue, because it's been a known issue on the site, and this creates a new opportunity for more. And I know that the, the owner is committed to make it work, and I like the double, the double pump as a, as a draw, as a methodology to protect ourselves, so I, the, the most important thing to me was that we didn't worsen the drainage issue. But, and I feel like the location was the, was the best location on that site for the choices that were put before the designer. So with that, I can, I can support it, and the, I think the, the mitigations that need to be done are, are being done, and I'm glad that the neighbor feels comfortable with it.
I have a comment.
Yeah, I've got some comments on the draft special structure report. I will support the issue that I've considered before. It's amazing to be able to build a tennis court, and a little bit of that. We should, under the draft special structures permit, make sure we know, for example, in number one, this is the architect's plan dated February 4th, as reviewed, not on December 5th, because they weren't there, scratch that, at February 27th, and any substantial changes to the plans should be reviewed by the planning commission, and the drawings are A2, I think, and A3.1B, so we know exactly what ones we're talking about. That's the ordered location on that one. And then, under number five, a sound wall located 19 feet in high shoveling and stuck along the eastern portion of the court, and effaced with, I would like to add, and effaced with acoustic material. See the report of William Iving and Associates, giving five options. So we know exactly. And then, number seven, add a number seven, let me say, the use of the tennis court lighting is not permitted, is prohibited, so somehow it doesn't pop up and be lit. And number eight, based on what we just learned about the pump, we have to say something, and I'll leave it to somebody else to say the words, pump and mechanical systems shall be screened for noise abatement for the light.
All right, did you want to make a motion then?
They're finding again.
So the same, but I support, I, I obviously support the...
Tennis court.
The tennis court. I think tennis court is just fine.
If it were a basketball court, I would understand that.
Okay, motion, I move the planning commission approve the special structures permit as amended at 92 Southern, based on the findings, and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report and subject to the conditions as amended, listed in the special structures, special structures permit to allow retaining walls in association with construction of a tennis court at the revised locations, referenced drawings A2 and A3.1B dated February 4th, 2013, and the construction of a nine-foot sound wall, including acoustical material.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Approval is given, a five to nothing.
I would like to thank the, the owner and all the staff associated with it for the work with us, and all the, all the extra effort that you went through in the last couple of months to make sure that everyone involved was included and resolved all the issues for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine is our next item. Do we have a staff report on that?
Thank you. The next item before you is a request for a special structures permit to construct a basement under an accessory structure at 49 McCormick Lane. The applicant is proposing a second dwelling unit with the basement located below the footprint. As you can tell from the site plan, this lot is unique, and that the side property line runs parallel to the front property line. A portion of the property line, sorry, excuse me, and a portion of the property line extends past McCormick Lane. The configuration of the lot with regards to setbacks has been reviewed with planning staff, and it is staff's interpretation that the designation of the property lines is as you see on the site plan. As you are aware, second dwelling units may be located in the main buildable area, but can encroach 20% into the side and rear setbacks. This exception was done in an effort to encourage second dwelling units as a means to meet affordable housing requirements mandated by the state. Therefore, for this project, the minimum required site setback is 40 feet, and the minimum rear setback is 50 feet. The second unit meets both of these requirements. The applicant is proposing a basement with a utility room and an area for washer and dryer, and is intended to be utilized for storage. There are two egress windows facing the rear of the lot, and those windows are approximately 48 feet from the neighbor, excuse me, the neighbor's property line to the right, and 180 feet to the rear of the property. The applicant is proposing a, or, excuse me, is proposing landscape screening to cover the safety railing that will be around the window wells. I also wanted to point out that there is a porch indicated on the site plan and floor plans. This porch does not meet setback requirements, and approval of the basement would not constitute approval of the porch. The applicant and owner have been informed that this would have to be removed as part of their permit submittal. Staff received two public comment letters today, both of which are at your chairs, and we have met with one of the neighbors who submitted one of those letters. There has been some question arisen about the unique shape of the lot. According to the owner, the portion of the lot that extends into the street was paved by a developer in an attempt to connect McCormick Lane to a new subdivision on Burns. As a result of a lawsuit in 1957, that portion of property was deemed to be private and therefore closed to vehicular traffic. The deed to the lot does recognize that strip of land as private property, although there may be an easement for access to the nearby neighbor's driveway. Excuse me, although there may be an easement for access to the nearby neighbor's driveway, setbacks are consistently measured from the property lines, not from the edge of the easements. The town arborist has visited the site and his memo is included. Based on the reasons listed in the staff report, we are supportive of the application for a basement under the unit. I'm available for questions, and the applicant and owner are also present. Thank you.
I have a clarifying question. You got this comment letter, but it's a long letter. Do we want to take a few minutes to read it? Because I have no idea what you mean.
Good, right, oh, I think, I think we should, but let's, after we finish here, let's, let's pause, everybody can read the letter and get the points, and we can call, and we can back if there are questions arise. I do have a, a question. Obviously, the, the lot is not shaped, but it would seem to me, even with its odd shape, that the front setback should go across the, the front and continue on in the oddball bump, if we may call it, of the, the private drop. If this were a flag lot, I would think that the front setback would go to the side setbacks of 40 feet, or all the way across, so your interpretation of this needing only a 40-foot setback is questionable in my mind.
Mr. Chair, quite frankly, I've read the law. I concur 100% with Lisa's interpretation. That is not a road or a street in front of there, it's a driveway.
I understand that.
But no place else in town do we interpret it that the driveway somehow changes the front yard setback. And this is, in fact, a legal determination. You can say you don't like it and send a, a letter to the city council, but the bottom line is, that is how the code says we measure setback. We don't get to choose, the city planning commission doesn't get to choose.
What section of the code, and show me the code that talks about front setback?
Well, if I could, if you walk through, I'll just put this up and walk through, how we make our determination.
It's a good question, and it is one that I'm sure nobody ever contemplated when we code with the doctor, but this is what it says.
Well, one, one clarifying question. I mean, isn't before us building a basement under an accessory structure? It's not taking a position on whether this structure complies with ordinances.
Because the issue is, where do you measure setbacks from? Setbacks are measured from the property line.
Right, but, but is that before us is a basement?
It's just a basement.
It's putting, the before us is putting a basement under an accessory structure.
Sure, but the question was raised by the chair. He said, I don't think it should be measured from there, it should be straight across. That's not how we measure setbacks, and there's lots of places, I can show you on town maps, where the property line somewhat meanders or bends and goes in different directions, and we're, the staff is stuck. We can't change the law. The law is the city code. We can't change the law, the law is the city code, and, and therefore, we're sort of-
Well, I, I think the question, no, you cannot change the code, but when I was trying, I think, I think it is an important call, but nevertheless, the, the fact that if, if, for instance, that property angled to the point, you know, out, angled across instead of having the bump, as I would call it, which is forms the private road, the front setback would have to follow the front line of the lot, and, and be possibly stopped by the side setbacks.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you asked a question, seventeen fifty-four point oh thirty says that all setback distances shall be measured at right angles from the designated property line, for example, front, interior side, street side, rear, et cetera. And, and so, we're sort of, I mean, no offense, I agree, it's odd, and you're going to get that, especially in an older community sometimes, but if, if, hearing the history for the first time tonight where there was a lawsuit, and the judge determined where the property line is, I can't change that.
Well, I understand you can't change it, but it would seem to me that the front setback should follow all the way to the side setback.
It would be logical, but the law says it's measured from the property line, not from a logical extension that-
Well, yes, and the only way I would interpret it is that from where it bumps out, and you have a line of the property that's parallel to the, to the street, if that is seventy feet, the, the bump out sides would be forty feet. So, I, I would say that this is sitting in the front yard, so that's my, that's my argument.
It looks like it's in the front yard, but legally, it's not, because the city code is drafted in such way that you measure it right angles from the property line.
Okay, and I'm not, and I'm measuring it right angles from the property line, the property line that has the private drive on it. In other words, I would say it should go like, the seventy feet should go across the front.
Maybe, maybe Lisa can show you how she-
Yeah, the, the front property line is further defined.
I've heard this for years, still, you know?
Further defined as being that property line that's adjacent to the public driveway. So, we took a look at this site, and it is unique. This line, to this point, is what we consider to be the front property line for the property, and it does meet our minimum width requirement for a new lot, which is a hundred and seventy-five feet wide. So, I consider this to be the front property line. As it turns, I consider this portion to be an exterior side property line.
Right.
Similar to how this property turns, this would be a side property line. And this here would become an interior side property line, and then we have two more sides, and then the rear at this location.
Yeah.
So, what we've done is they've taken the accessory structure setback, which is, as you know, a hundred and twenty feet from front property line, moved it back to this location, measured here the exterior side setback, forty feet here, as well as forty feet there, and it would normally be fifty feet, but because of that ten percent encroachment for the second dwelling unit, in this situation, it's forty feet. And so, you have this large area here where you cannot build detached accessory structures, but because of this unique configuration where this is private property, we would consider this to be the side yard.
Thank you.
However odd it may be.
Yes. You want my case here?
Okay, is there any other questions?
And we do have a copy of the deed before you that shows the easement, and that easement was recorded in two thousand and seven. At the city council meeting, when the item was before the council, the adjacent property owner had requested the property adjacent to it be abandoned, and through that process, the city attorney at that time was able to get some cleanup language and able to get this easement. It previously was not a recorded document, so that's why you see that two thousand and seven date. And then also, I have the assessor parcel map that just kind of clean shows how that is to property.
Mr. Chair, one of the questions that were asked by one of the neighbors today was, does any action taken by the planning commission or the town somehow extinguish the easement when it does not? The easement survives no matter what happens.
Any other questions, Andrew?
I just have a clarification, because there's, on this site map, there's guidelines and solid warnings. My understanding was that the, the basement that is proposed is fully underneath the, the proposed footprint.
Does not extend to that porch area, just under the footprint of the structure.
Right, right. It's just under the footprint.
I have a question, I just on the staff report. We, on this one, we see several uses of wording where we say accessory building, and then we say second dwelling unit. Shouldn't we make sure that that is a second dwelling unit?
It is both. It is a second dwelling unit that needs to meet the requirements of an accessory building. So, it's an accessory dwelling unit in that you can have the full-time habitation and the setback encroachment, but it's also an accessory building when you're limited by the size, the height, the sidewalls, and the location. So, it's both.
So, because we can call it a second dwelling unit, it counts?
It counts what?
It counts.
Absolutely, towards meeting our affordable housing requirements, yes.
No.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Is there, is there any, is this the point where I'd ask staff if there's any analysis of the tree impact or anything like that?
I did look at the site, and there are quite a few heritage trees that will surround that building, and it looks like the diameters of the tree and the, the distance that the foundations will be, or the basement will be from the trees, that were, were in pretty good shape there, tree-wise. We, as, as normal on a basement or a construction site near trees, we will require an arc of, you know, a full arborist report with a tree protection plan to be included with that, and, which will include if there's any root cutting, that the arborist will monitor and document any root cutting or-